Okay, Acts, Chapter 4. This is at the end of Peter's second sermon from last week after he healed the blind beggar. So, "As they were speaking to the people, the priests and the captain of the temple, and the Sadducees came upon them, greatly annoyed, because they were teaching the people and proclaiming in Jesus the resurrection from the dead. And they arrested them and put them in custody until the next day, for it was already evening; but many of those who had heard the word believed, and the number of men came to about five thousand. On the next day the rulers and elders and scribes gathered together in Jerusalem, with Anis the high priest, and Caiphas, and John and Alexander, and all who were of the high priestly family. And when they had set them in the midst, they inquired, 'By what power, by what name did you do this?' Then Peter, filled with the Holy Spirit, said to them, 'Rulers of the people and elders, if we are being examined today concerning a good deed done to a crippled man, by what means this man has been healed, let it be known to all of you and to all the people of Israel, that by the name of Jesus Christ of Nazareth whom you crucified, whom God raised from the dead, by him this man is standing before you well. This Jesus is the stone that was rejected by you, the builders, which has become the cornerstone. And there is salvation in no one else, for there is no other name under heaven given among men by which we must be saved.' Now when they saw the boldness of Peter and John, and perceived that they were uneducated, common men, they were astonished, and they recognized that they had been with Jesus. But seeing the man who was healed standing beside them, they had nothing to say in opposition. But when they had commanded them to leave the council, they conferred with one another, saying, 'What shall we do with these men? For that a notable sign has been performed through them as evidence to all the inhabitants of Jerusalem, and we cannot deny it. But in order that it may spread no further among the people, let us warn them to speak no more to anyone in this name.' So they called them and charged them not to speak or teach at all in the name of Jesus; but Peter and John answered them, 'Whether it is right in the sight of God to listen to you rather than to God, you must judge, for we cannot but speak of what we have seen and heard.' And when they had further threatened them, they let them go, finding no way to punish them, because of the people who were all praising God for what had happened; for the man on whom this sign of healing was performed was more than forty years old. When they were released, they went to their friends and reported what the chief priests and the elders had said to them; and when they heard it, they lifted their voices together to God and said, 'Sovereign Lord, who made the heaven and the earth and the sea and everything in them, who through the mouth of our Father David, your servant, said by the Holy Spirit, 'Why did the Gentiles rage in the people's plot in vain? The kings of the earth set themselves, and the rulers were gathered together against the Lord, against his anointed; for truly in this city they were gathered together against your holy servant Jesus, whom you anointed, both Herod and Pontius Pilate, along with the Gentiles and the peoples of Israel, to do whatever your hand and your plan had predestined to take place. And now, Lord, look upon their threats, and grant to your servants to continue to speak your word with all boldness, while you stretch out your hand to heal, and signs and wonders are performed through the name of your holy servant Jesus.' And when they had prayed, the place in which they were gathered together was shaken, and they were all filled with the Holy Spirit, and continued to speak the word of God with boldness. Now the full number of those who believed were of one heart and soul, and no one said that any of the things that belonged to him was his own; but they had everything in common. And with great power the apostles were giving their testimony to the resurrection of the Lord Jesus, and great grace was upon them all. There was not a needy person among them; for as many as were owners of lands or houses sold them, and brought the proceeds of what was sold and laid it at the apostles' feet, and it was distributed to each as any had need. Thus Joseph, who was also called by the apostles Barnabas, which means son of encouragement, a Levite, a native of Cyprus, sold a field that belonged to him, and brought the money and laid it at the apostles' feet. Okay, now the end of that chapter is setting the stage for the next chapter, which is the story of Ananias and Sapphira next week. So, that's why that kind of changes. The chapter divisions are not always where we would maybe logically put them in the story, but once you've set those things in stone, so to speak, you can't change them, because everybody's Bible will be different. So sometimes verses and chapters don't necessarily make sense. So we have Peter and John speaking to people, and now we have, oh, the big weeks came out, because there's a big crowd, and you want to know what's what. So, the captain of the temple guard, so you have the temple guard that keeps order around the temple, and the priests are there because they want to know what's going on. People are listening to them, John and Peter instead of the priests, and the Sadducees. And they were annoyed. Why were they annoyed? What do the Sadducees believe? Remember what those folks believe? They're different, they're like the Pharisees, they're one of the group divisions, like we have like Lutherans, Methodist, Baptist, right? So you have different groups of Jews, and the Sadducees were one of those groups. And you'll, anybody remember what the...
Resurrection?
Right, what about it?
They either did, or they didn't believe.
Right, so the way to remember that is why are the Sadducees always sad? Because there's no resurrection of the dead. That's why they're sad, you see? Right? Right? So Sadducees don't believe in the resurrection of the dead. Once you're dead, you're dead. That's it. There's no heaven, there's no hell, you're dead, that's it. Which, wonderful outlook on life, right? Which is what, if you ever ask, like, what do Jews today believe? A lot of them, that's, they're Sadducees. They really are. So, you still have the two big groups. You have what would be your pharisaical Jews, who works righteous, it's all about everything you do. And there's a big group that believes, once you're dead, you're dead. And I think some of your secular Jews tend that way. It's like, well, why do you got to go to temple? Because once you're dead, you're dead. Don't quote me on that, but I had a Jewish friend tell me that once. That's kind of how it breaks down today. So Sadducees are annoyed because they are talking about the resurrection of the dead that they don't believe in. You're giving people false hope if you tell them there's a resurrection of the dead. So they arrested them, and put them in custody. But, guess what? Just like with Jesus, people are believing what they're hearing. So they're hearing Peter and John, and it says about five thousand men again. So that was the same number you had on Pentecost. I don't know if there's any particular significance to five thousand. Five thousand, Jesus fed five thousand people. First Pentecost, five thousand people came to faith. That number comes up a lot, but I think it's just a number. So you've got a bunch of people there who came to believe in Jesus, in the resurrection of the dead, about five thousand people. So now they get the rulers together, the elders, the scribes. Remember, the scribes aren't just people that, they're not copyists. That's where the word scribe came from originally. But a scribe is like what we would call a doctor of the law, or a doctor of theology today. So these are Jews who are doctors of theology. They brought out the brain trust, just like they did with Jesus, the scribes were there. So they bring out the scribes, oh, and they get the high priest too. And you got Caiphas, who was high priest when Jesus was crucified. So it's a who's who, and John and Alexander, you've got all these guys that are members of, let's see. John is, I think the note, yeah, the note says, John is likely the son of Anis, the successor of Caiphas. Alexander, they don't know who he was. But the high priestly family, they are the Hasmonians. They're just this priestly family of that generation. And they put John and Peter in the middle and said, well, how'd you do it? How'd you do this? And Peter stands up to, stands up to preach, filled with the Holy Spirit. And says, well, you know, if you're, if you're asking, how do we did this good work? You know, what did we do wrong? We healed this guy, and if that's what you're still talking about, then we did it in the name of Jesus Christ. You know, that one person that you killed, that we saw raised from the dead, that guy? His name? That's how we did it. That's how he's standing before you today. And then they quote, what is that? Do, do, do. Verse 11? Psalm 118, right? The stone that the builders rejected has become the cornerstone.
Yeah, Psalm 118.
Right, so, so Jesus, he was the stone the builders rejected, and he actually becomes the stone upon which everything else is built, without which everything falls. So he quotes Psalm 118, which they would immediately hear, understand, that there's salvation, no one else, there's no other name in who you could do any of these things, because there's no other name through whom anybody could be saved. And they see, wow, these guys are, you know, they've brought out, okay, they got half the army out there, right? They've got the, they've got the guards, they've got the high priest, they've got the high priest's family, they have the brain trust, they have the scribes, they got, all the heavy hitters are around them, just like Jesus had at his trial before his crucifixion. You have all these guys standing around, and are like, look how bold these guys are. Look at these guys. Look how, look how strong they're speaking. And wait a minute, if these guys were with Jesus, they're just, like, that guy's a fisherman, and I don't know who John is, he's just a kid, right? He's a teenager. He's maybe sixteen at this point, depending on when you think he was born. You know, he was a young man. And then you have Peter, who's a bruiser, right? He's rough and tumble fisherman, he was probably the owner of the fishing company. But still, he's a bruiser, he's a brawler. And they're like, these men are not educated. Well, yeah, depends on your definition of education. They weren't educated like a Pharisee was, right? Not like, like Paul was. You know, when we talk about Paul, Paul's a sharp cookie. He was Pharisee, Pharisees, he went to the finest theology schools the Jews had. So compared to that, yeah, Peter is an uneducated hick. But we all know people from humble places who are actually smarter than people with degrees, right? There's different kinds of smart. And these guys would have been, Peter as the owner of a fishing, couple fishing vessels, he would have to speak Greek, he would have to know his letters, he would have to know how to do some math. You know, he is not uneducated. He's not a university professor either, but calling these guys uneducated is unfair. But look who's saying it. So you've got all the snobby Jews, all the snobby Pharisees are standing there going, these guys are, this is just some kid and some hick. So, hmm, but even so, I can't really refute their argument. What am I gonna say? What are they gonna say against these two fellows? They can't. They're standing there, they had nothing to say. That's what Luke writes. They had nothing to say in opposition. Huh. But then they commanded them to leave the council, so they said, okay, you guys go stand over there. The grownups have to talk. What are we gonna do with them? Because it's obvious this guy's been healed, and he's not, you know, he's over the age of forty, which forgive me for not remembering what, why that is significant. Forty years old. I do, I don't, I don't know what it is, what the significance of that is, other than he's been crippled and everybody knows him. And he's been crippled for a while, because he's not, he's not super young. So, everybody, everybody knows this guy has been begging at this gate, the beautiful gate, right? He's been begging at that gate, everybody knows he's crippled, and now he's not. We heard them say, well, they did it in Jesus' name. We can't refute that argument. And everybody's seen it, and that's always the problem with these guys, right? What is their problem? It's not, it's not that they did it, it's just everybody's seen it, so we can't do anything to them, because we're afraid what people are gonna say. We can't punish them, because everybody, but they healed this guy, what's wrong with that? And we have nothing to say in, what are you gonna say to that? Well, take it back, you know, make them crippled again. All right, so they can't do that. Everybody in Jerusalem has seen this guy, that he's healed. So they're like, I know, we'll tell them not to do it, not to talk about that Jesus guy anymore. So they said, hey, we're gonna let you go, don't talk about Jesus anymore. And Peter doesn't shut up, there's like, okay, see ya. No. Peter and John answered, whether it's right in the sight of God to listen to you rather than God, that's up to you to judge, but we can't do anything except speak about what we've seen and heard. We're eyewitnesses, and you've seen how they, he's repeating that again. We've seen it. We saw Jesus crucified. We saw Jesus raised from the dead. We healed this guy in Jesus' name, and you saw it. Believe it. Because without Jesus, in nobody's else's name, can you be saved? That's what we have to say. We can't say anything else. Kind of like, because Peter, being a good Lutheran, stands up just like Martin Luther did, here I stand, I can do no other, right? That's exactly what Peter's doing, his here I stand moment. I can't do anything else, other than say this. And so they, it just says they further threatened him, right? We have no way to punish him. All, it's like, yeah, well, after they, you know, they admonished him not to do that anymore, they let him go. And so, we can't figure out how to punish you, because all the people are praising God for what happened. And hey, you can't get angry at people for praising God. You know, they're not, it doesn't say they're praising Jesus, they're praising God. Although Jesus is God, they're praising God. And they're like, well, what are Pharisees gonna do? Go, don't praise God for that, right? All right, so this, everybody knows this guy was crippled, and now he's not. And, okay, just don't do that anymore, and you guys go away. So they went to their friends, told them everything that happened to it. And so everybody's praising God, they're praying, right? Quoting more Psalms, because what are the Psalms? When you don't know what to do, you go to the Psalms, because the Psalms are prayers, all of them, all hundred and fifty of them, even the ones we don't like. So, all hundred and fifty Psalms, even the ones that are telling you, you want to see your enemies crushed, calling down God's vengeance, they're our prayers, that's why God gave them to us. So that's why usually when they are lifting up their eyes and praising God, they're quoting Psalms. Because that's, that's what you do. That's what we do. That's what a lot of our hymns are. You take God's words that he gave you, and you give them back to God. That's what God wants. And so talks, and then he says, okay, who through the mouth of our Father David, said by the Holy Spirit, and quotes some more. Why did the Gentiles rage in people's plot? The kings of the earth set themselves, the rulers were gathered together. Sounds like a prophecy that we just saw enacted, right? And against the Lord, and against his anointed, because at the end of the day, it was all against Jesus. It's like, okay, we thought we took care of this Jesus situation. No, we didn't, because he's still alive, and he's raised from the dead, but we don't want to admit that. And continues his prayer, because, hey, we saw it. Everybody's gathered against Jesus. Herod plotted against him, Pontius Pilate got in it, into it, all the Gentiles, all the Romans. Everybody. And no matter what happened, it was God's will that was carried out. Yeah, Jesus was crucified, if it wasn't the Romans, something else would have occurred, so that Jesus was sacrificed. But it was God's will that the Jews conspired with the Romans, executed Jesus, and he came back from the dead. That was predestined to take place. And now, look, Lord, they're still threatening us, right? He's saying, this is what had to happen, and now, Lord, look upon their threats, and grant to your servants to continue to do what we did today. Because we didn't buckle, and we don't want to buckle. Continue to give us that strength, while you stretch out your hand to heal, right? So, they spoke the word through the Holy Spirit, and give us the ability to continue to do these signs and wonders through the name of Jesus. They're not taking any credit, as they shouldn't. Okay, so, everything was, it's all you. Everything that's happened has been God's will, and God let it be your will. We continue speaking boldly, and that we continue to heal, and continue to do these signs and wonders. And then, what happens? They're all filled with the Holy Spirit, they continue to speak the word of God with boldness, and theirs, and earthquake. Which is weird. Where else was there earthquakes? Other than Book of Revelation, because it's always when the world ends, so.
Well, when the Holy Spirit came upon them.
So when the Holy Spirit comes upon you, there's, there's the great shaking of the wind, right? Where else was there an earthquake?
It's just death.
Nope, that is death. Also, not much later, after the crucifixion.
Well, when the, what was split in half, when Christ died?
The curtain in the temple, in the Holy, Holy East. All right, so you had the earthquake at Good Friday, there was also an earthquake on Easter morning. That was when the bodies came out, right? Bodies come out of temples.
Rock was rolled away.
Mm-hmm, yeah, so there was an earthquake.
This man couldn't roll it away.
Right. So you had the angel rolled away. So there was an earthquake on Easter morning also. Old Testament, remember?
It must be significant.
Yeah.
All the earthquakes.
Usually when, when God is displaying power, right? What else displays power but a good earthquake, right? So the earth shook when Jesus died, the earth shook when he returned from the dead. The earth shook just now to remind us, well, why do you think that happened? Why do you think there was a little bit of an earth shake now?
Well, I think, probably because some of the people that were there didn't believe before this miracle, before this gentleman was healed. And they saw it happen, they saw that Peter and John do it, and then they believed, because of what they heard before they got to this meeting place. They had heard about Jesus, they had heard what he had done, his works, and so on. So, they saw it come to fruition right in front of them.
Right, right, so this is, you know, this is just another example of God's power being displayed, just like we saw in Acts, Chapter 2, at Pentecost, but different. You know, the same but different. I'm thinking of something that happened way back in Exodus.
An earthquake?
Mm-hmm.
Is that when the Red Sea was parted?
Nope, close. Let's see. There you go.
It certainly wasn't one of the plagues.
Yeah, it was Moses on the mountain. All right, let's see. "On the morning of the third day there were thunders and lightnings, and a thick cloud on the mountain, and very loud trumpet blasts, so that all the people in the camp trembled. Mount Sinai was wrapped in smoke, because the Lord had descended on it in fire. The smoke of it went up like the smoke of a kiln, and the whole mountain trembled greatly; and the sound of the trumpet grew louder and louder. Moses spoke, and God answered him in thunder. And the Lord came down on Mount Sinai to the top of the mountain, and the Lord called Moses to the top of the mountain, and Moses went up. And the Lord said to Moses, 'Go down and warn the people, as they break through to the Lord, to look, and many of them perish; also let the priests who come near consecrate themselves,' etcetera. And don't let the people come up. And then God spoke, and God gave the Ten Commandments." So, earthquake symbolized, you know, the earthquake didn't symbolize, the earthquake preceded God's presence coming down upon the mountain, which is then covered in smoke, so you can't see him, because if you see him, you're gonna die. But, so you have earthquake, God's presence. You have earthquake, yeah, Jesus' death, God's presence. You have earthquake, Jesus' resurrection, God's presence. You have an earthquake of the coming of the Holy Spirit, God's presence. You have this little earthquake now, and it just says, you know, that the, what did it say? How did it say it? The place in which they were gathered together was shaken, so it's like, right? Not, everything's tumbling now. So, God's presence, not like when he came down on Sinai, but it reminds you, it's like when the earth shakes, that's God doing that, right? So it's God's presence, and so that's why. So you see these apostles here at the beginning, doing these very, they're doing the same things Jesus had done, had done here on earth. So Jesus raised people from the dead, Jesus healed the sick, Jesus gave sight to the blind. Jesus did all of these signs and wonders, so that when he said, I'm the son of God, people go, yeah, I believe it, because look at what you did. And now, you have the apostles who are saying, okay, this, this guy who is lame, he's walking and running and jumping and praising God. You know, why he's doing that? Because he has faith in the name of Jesus Christ. That guy you crucified, who was raised from the dead, his power did that, his power did that. And by the way, we're able to do the things he did, that you saw he did, because, well, we saw him raised from the dead, and he sent us to proclaim this good news to you. So the apostles can do all the things Jesus could do, to give them credentials as the eyewitnesses to the resurrection. Which is why after the apostles, people can't do that stuff anymore. I can't raise people from the dead. I can't, my shadow doesn't heal people when it touches them, right? I'm not Peter. I don't have that power, because once the apostles passed, the church has begun, the good news is being proclaimed, they don't have to. You don't have to have that, that office of apostle cease to be. Because once the...
Do you believe in the laying on of hands?
Absolutely. I mean, does it, do I believe I have the miracle of healing when I do that? It's the power of prayer, that's all that is. And that's actually not for pastors to do, you know that? You know, where you're supposed to, you know, is anyone sick? Let the elders go and anoint them with oil. It's not pastors, that's men in the congregation, go to people's house when they're sick and anoint them with oil. But yeah, I do, I do, I do do oil. But yeah, that's actually one of the things that's not talking about pastors. It actually says for the elders of the congregation to go to people and do that. But that's all, it's the power of prayer. And prayer has, we've seen it. You know, we've seen the miracle of healing that people get from prayer. He absolutely answers prayer, just not the way we necessarily want him to sometimes. And absolutely none of those idiots on TV that are trying to heal people do it, like, man. You know, it doesn't even look real, you know?
I went to a faith healing service one time with somebody, just so that they had company. I didn't want to go by themselves, or, you know.
Strictly for the experience? So what was that like?
Fake. It was a Catholic church, um, yes.
When?
It was Independence.
Like when, though?
Thirty years ago.
Okay. Well, see, there was that charismatic movement that ripped through, like Catholicism and Lutheranism too. And you still hear remnants of that in some congregations. So it's fun, it's interesting to me to go into churches that have libraries, and go down in their library and see what books are on the shelf. Because it tells you, at least the time those books got put there, like, what the general consensus was in the congregation. So you'll see, like, you know, charismatic stuff, of these people that were like really into the faith healing, because they had somebody, a priest through town, and they opened up the church, oh, come to our church and do that. Get a lot of people in. Or, you know, like, you go to a church, and half the books on the shelf are by Billy Graham. Billy Graham's got some good stuff, I'm just saying. You go to a Lutheran church, and there's, like, you don't see any Luther on the shelf, but you see a bunch of Billy Graham books, that tells you what people were into at that time. And there was a lot of that in like the seventies and eighties. That was a big thing. So yeah, yeah, so you had that charismatic movement where, you have fake healing. There are still a lot of them. Put your hands on the television, who did that? Where you send money, if you put your hands on the television, and I will pray for you, and you'll be here.
That wasn't the Tower of Power, was it?
Was it Tower of Power? Was that, was, that wasn't Oral Roberts, was it? Oral Roberts, I saw Six Hundred Foot Jesus. No, I don't think it was him. But it was like that gener- it was that generation, because yeah, if you send me, if you send money and put your hands on the television, said, now he'll, you're like, okay.
They start, they're doing it now, they've had, oh, I tell you, oh. Senior moment. But anyway, they're, it's a Monday dish. You and God want you to prosper, you know?
Rex Hummer was starting all that stuff way back, and...
That might be.
Yeah, Rex Hummer was.
Yeah.
You might not have known him, he was out of the Akron area.
There's a guy, now it's on TV, he's a, appears to be some kind of Arab, his name, last name is Yusuf. But what he has been saying, he follows Charles Stanley on TV, seems to be squared away in what he's saying, you know? But he, as far as I noticed, he just showed up here in the last six months, maybe.
His last name is Jerusalem?
Yusuf, I think you said.
Yusuf.
Yusuf?
Y-O-U-S-E-F. I haven't heard him say anything, it's too crazy.
Yeah, so these, so Peter and John have been pretty bold here. I mean, they're not, like, isn't it ironic? The last time Peter was kind of surrounded by these same guys, he was kind of a little on the outside that day. But when was the last, when was the last time Peter had an opportunity to be that bold?
When Jesus was being...
Aren't you one of his disciples? I know, you're, I can tell by your accent, you're Galilean, so you were with him, right? No, I don't even know who he is. I don't, I don't know the man. Yeah, so he's come like, boom, like hundred and eighty degrees, because like, right now, they could have, they could have taken him off. I mean, they could have probably found the local Romans, and they had him arrested and beaten, right? They didn't.
Well, no, they couldn't do that, because my Bible has a footnote saying it was near the end of the day, the gates were closed at four PM, and they would just have to let them go till the next day, because no one could be arrested for dark.
Right, right, so they have to follow the last... But they could have not gone back the next day, but they did, right? So they could have gotten him the next day. All I'm saying is Peter's behavior could have been the same, but it didn't. It's completely the opposite now. Of course, witnessing the resurrection kind of maybe changes your mind a little bit.
And having the Holy Spirit sent.
And having a little whammy of the Holy Spirit, absolutely, so. But it just, I see the same people congregating around them, right? It's like, that didn't bode well for Jesus when they arrested him, and it's not, shouldn't bode well for these guys, but they're like, yeah, no, don't do that anymore. Okay, we are, we're gonna do that again, we're gonna stand right back up and say the exact same... Don't do that anymore, okay, we, we're gonna do that again, we're gonna stand right back up and say the exact same thing. You know, so there's a big, big difference, you know, you just see these guys, like, why, why are these guys, you know, why is Luke?
They were just trying to figure out how they were gonna maintain control.
Right, right. So you have, so you have the apostles, you know, acting in this way, obviously because they are, you know, filled with the Holy Spirit. But, you know, they're still, it's not safe, it's still not safe for them to be doing this.
Yes, but since it was late in the day and they couldn't be arrested, so if they came back the next day, you know what was going to happen, they were going to bring more people with, uh, injuries or.
Oh, sure.
And so then the priests in the Sanhedrin and everybody would see more miracles performed.
Yeah, so they're just gonna go, well, we ought to arrest them, but you know, they keep healing people, so, yeah. Yeah, it's kind of a catch twenty-two for them, but, but they're being, you know, they're being pretty bold, this is, this is a strong, strong beginning. And it's just, yeah, interesting to me to see, obvi- and, and Peter says the same thing, for, truly in this city were gathered together against your holy servant Jesus, whom you anointed, Herod, Pilate, the Gentiles, people of Israel. But then he reaffirms, because it was your will that this take place, so right now, we're walking out free, preaching the gospel and healing people, because that's your will too, right? So their faith is solid, that just, what a contrast to just prior to the crucifixion. And, you know, God gives it a little reassuring, boom, yeah, I'm right here.
Well, wouldn't, wouldn't your faith be strong though, if you saw Jesus killed in the manner in which he was, and then he came back to life and you got to see him and talk to him? Wouldn't that?
I would have to say that would be a formative.
Almost all of them were martyrs for their faith.
Yeah.
Okay, if that weren't true, if that didn't happen, if Jesus didn't come back from the dead, would they have given up their lives for a lie?
Absolutely not, and that's one of the great arguments for when people try to tell you the resurrection never happened. They'll say, okay, here's the story of these eleven fellows, every single one of them who was executed for his faith. No one under torture, and, and there were, these were torturous deaths, right? No one under torture is gonna die for something they know is a lie. Now, you will believe, you will die for something you believe is the truth, if, even if it's not true, but you believe it's true, suicide bombers, okay, they believe in what they think is gonna happen, and that is why they blow themselves up. But no one, oh, well, the, the apostles were in on the conspiracy, Jesus never died, he just passed out. Or, well, you know, they stole the body and hid it, and then they just.
But that, in a case like that, he'd have to die again.
Yeah. But, but the thing is, it's like, okay, so the apostles are in this conspiracy, no one dies for a conspiracy under torture, no one. It's, if you know something's a lie, you're not gonna die for it, absolutely not. Unless, I mean, you'd have to be some kind of insane, but you don't die for something you know is a lie, no one does, not that kind of death, not that kind of torture. And if you look at how those eleven guys, John died of old age. If you look how all these other guys and some of the early martyrs died, it's horrific. You know, you have like, uh, Matthew crucified, Peter crucified, Andrew crucified, uh.
Peter was upside down.
Peter was upside down, traditionally by request. Uh, but that was also actually a form of crucifixion, so all the different forms of crucifixion that are described, those are, the Romans had more than one way, which is horrific to read about too. Boiled in oil, sawn in half, I mean, poisoned and then boiled in oil. Uh, John, tradition says, they tried to boil him in oil and he wouldn't cook, and then they, what else did they do? They, they tried to boil him in oil and he wouldn't die, they, they tried to, yeah, that was Paul, Paul was poisoned, he wouldn't die. But yeah, I think John was poisoned and he wouldn't die, boiled in oil and he wouldn't die, they tried to burn in a mistake and he wouldn't die, he wouldn't burn. And they finally, like, okay, prison, didn't know what to do with him, that's all legend. But look at all the things that happened to Paul, and he didn't die either, and that's in the Bible. Uh, yes, you have all these horrific ways, if the traditions are true, and they were actual execution methods and torture methods, none of these guys would have done that, they would at some point have gone, yeah, we, yeah, I'm a liar. Nobody would do that, and every single one of them, to a man, plus all the, all their early martyrs, including Stephen, who we'll get to in a couple of weeks. Uh, nobody, nobody will sit and take that, knowing that you're lying, so, yeah. And that many martyrs just doesn't happen, and that's why I always say, when, and that, that's one of your arguments against people that say the resurrection never happened, that, well, they didn't actually see him. Like, yeah, they did, they kinda did, and they kinda believed it, and that's why they kind of went to that kind of death. Because they know, they knew what they saw was true, they believed. That's probably, that's probably a good stopping place, duh. All of these people, it doesn't say how many of them are, it just says, all of them were of one heart and soul, and everybody said, what's mine is yours, basically. Which some people like to cherry pick that and said, see, you know, communism, it's like, no, it's not communism. You know, so they shared everything, they had everything in common. You, church unity in every respect, hates the early days. Sin hadn't really got its fingers in the early church yet to screw everything up, which we see over the next two thousand years, right? You know, they still all believe, yeah, Jesus raised from the dead, and you believe in that, you have everything you'll ever need, right? So there's complete unity, it's beautiful.
So when, when it's saying that, is that including the priests and the temple guards and all those people who were standing around watching?
No, now they're just talking about the Christians.
Oh, okay.
Yes, because when they were released, they went to their friends, and reported everything that's said. Uh, so they went back to wherever the rest of the group was, so they were at the temple, they had this big showdown, yeah.
Back to their own people and reported all.
Yes, so wherever they're staying, so they have community property, they're selling all their stuff, uh, they're all owning it together. So you have perfect unity of doctrine, and they had everything in common, they shared everything with one another. They just believed that this is what they should do, and that's all that means, they shared everything, and they believed everything in common. Which we'll then see start to go bad, and actually you'll see it go bad in the next chapter, it's like, yeah, everything's perfect now, but wait.
Of course, sin enters in.
Sin enters into everything, so. Uh, and that they were held in, what did it say? They said they were held in, did it say they were held in high esteem? Or, with great power, there, so there was powerful preaching, first of all. I like the, I like the Lutheran Study Bible note, which I find it slightly offensive, it says, with great power the apostles were, giving their testimony of the resurrection and great grace was upon them all, so the great grace upon them all, that doesn't mean like grace from above, grace means they were, that actually means, that word there means, uh, people held them in high esteem, it's like, hey, look at those guys, look how great they're getting along, like, that's, that should be an example to us, that's how you wanna live. Wonder what's different about them, let me tell you about Jesus, right? Uh, it said, uh, the preaching was the opposite of dull, distant reading from a manuscript, so, shame on you, you should memorize your sermon every Sunday. If I tried to do that, I don't have the courage to get up there and do that, I mean, I know what I wrote, but I'm, if I got up there without a manuscript, I'd just be like looking at you going, I don't remember what I was gonna say, that's, my brain don't work that, doesn't work that way. Some people can't, I can't do that, I don't wanna try to do that. But, anybody that reads for that's why I don't like that note. Dull, distant reading from a manuscript.
Which brings up a little comment, uh, from Sunday, there was one person in the car out in the parking lot and said that the reception was not good.
It depends where they park, because I have people every week say, oh, the reception was perfect, nothing changes.
They need to go down.
Yeah, they, they need to.
The windows are.
Yeah, they maybe need to be, the best place to park is right out, right across from the pulpit.
Okay.
Not there, because it's, the transmitter's right there.
I have to tell her that.
But yeah, it's, uh, it should cover the whole parking lot, but again, radio waves are funny.
Yes. Didn't mean to.
No, it's alright, yeah, because I, I, because I'll have people in cars next to each other, it's like, oh, it sounds terrible, it's like, well, listen to ours, it's perfect, and it depend, it doesn't depend on how new the car is or that, it's just, they're right next to each other, this one gets it, this one doesn't, there's no rhyme or reason to it. And he can't do more power, because any more power is, uh, no, no. It's as much power as I can have without having an FCC license. Possibly a little more, but, but, uh, that's all a unit is capable of.
So that's the ultimate goal, is to have it a FCC license?
No. You know, that's, that's just what I need in my life, more rules and regulations. It's kinda like I wanted to get into flying quad captors, you have to, the license, you have to, everybody has, has a license for it now.
What is that?
Uh, drones, the little drones.
Oh, oh, okay, you fly them over a certain height, you need FAA?
Well, no, you own the airspace on your property that you own, you own up to three hundred and fifty feet. So if you're on, if you're within your boundary, your property boundary, up to, it's either three fifty or four fifty, you can go up, that's your airspace. Beyond that, yeah, you have to have a license. Which means you have to register, and then they wanna know what you're dealing with, and, 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 and.
So we have to estimate if your drone is within three hundred and fifty feet before we shoot it down.
Right. Where I live, you don't have to worry about that, because if you fly your drone about three hundred feet above your house, the eagles will come and take it out of the air. Have you seen those videos? If people fly their drones up and a bald eagle comes by, they don't like those things, because they think it's a threat, and they'll take, they take them to the ground, it's like, boom!
And we've got a couple, so.
We've got many, so, yeah, so you can't.
How much is feeding them now?
I guess, because those, those nests are huge. Yeah, you'll see, every now and then, you'll see cars lined up on Heasley Road there, because that's what they're all looking at is, uh, their big eagle's nests in the trees.
Is it in the Headlands, the, um, marsh, marsh area?
Yeah, yep. Yeah, it's on forty-four on the, forty-four north on the left-hand side there. There's a bunch of, all the trees on the, uh, edge of the road there, back in the, excuse me, back in the marsh before the swamp starts, it's all eagle's nest, like tons of them.
Wow, we'll have to drive over there, Chad. Your binoculars.
You sure you know where we're going, because I've, not, computer's not.
Yeah, like, well, like, here's Heasley Road and here's Headlands State Park.
Okay.
Okay, when you get to state, the park, go back the other way you came, and then those trees on the right side of the road, that's where they all are. Yeah, wait another month or so when the leaves, more leaves are down, and you'll actually be able to see the nests, they're like, those big, they're huge. Yeah, so that's where we'll stop this week, so, not a needy person among them, they were all as many, so it's like, everybody sold as many as were owners of lands or houses, so they all, if they owned property, they all sold it, brought it to the apostles, and then everybody shared it. Which is great in a perfect world, but that is to contrast what's gonna happen next. And that's why they made a big deal of talking about Joseph, who was called Barnabas, who was a Levite, right? So he was a member of the priestly class, so he's probably a convert, right, Jewish convert to Christianity, sold a field and brought the money, all of it, laid it at his disciples' feet. So he did that, all of the money, because somebody is going to not give all the money, and that's what we'll talk about next week. Hopefully I get a better reaction out of you guys than I did out of my confirmation class, we did Ananias and Sepphorah last Sunday in confirmation class. Said, did you read, did you guys read anything in this story that struck you as odd? And they said, no, and there's like two really odd things, you know, the first one is, and the second one is later, it was like, you know, you, you guys didn't think any of that was odd? No, well, how about this, this happened, did you think that was odd? No, okay, then what about what happened in Ananias and Sepphorah, did you think that was odd, like, do you think that was like a little harsh? Well, no, like, okay, so you guys watch too many violent movies if you think that's okay. They accepted it just like, well, yeah, so what you get? Okay, okay.
They expect God to be smitey, I guess.